Okay, it is 5:31, so I'd like to call this Thursday, May 21st, 2020, virtual regular meeting to order. And I would like for you to bow for a moment of silence, remembering the, on Monday is Memorial Day for those who sacrificed their lives and also our first responders. And so if you'll just bow for a moment of silence. Amen. Okay, if you can, I have a flag. And if you can't, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can't, just stay seated. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, the next item is the mission statement. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. The next item is a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? You gotta unmute yourself. Kathy, you gotta unmute yourself.
There you go.
There you go. There you go, Kathy.
All right.
Please.
Ms. Allen, she is.
I'm present. Oh, okay, good seeing you. Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mr. Lamb?
Present.
Reverend Patillo?
Here.
Mrs. Schumake?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for May 21st, 2020. You've had a copy of the agenda. What is the board's pleasure, please?
Yeah, move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion?
I'm starting here, who made the motion?
Patillo.
Andre. Who was it?
I thought it was Barnes. Was it Mr. Barnes?
It's Patillo. Oh, whoever.
I don't know.
I heard Deandre Barnes.
That's who I thought, okay.
All right, Mr. Barnes made it. And who seconded?
Ms. Haas.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got it?
Yes.
Now, hearing no further discussion, we're ready to vote. Roll call.
Ms. Allen? Ms. Allen?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Okay.
Mr. Barnes? Where's Mr. Barnes?
Uh oh.
Okay, Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion, and that's the school lunch price for 2021 school year. Dr. Bracy, is that going to be you or Mr. Falk?
That'll be me.
Okay.
All right, um, this, obviously, you guys see this every year, but this is a required annual calculation that's done in accordance with the Healthy Hunger and Kids Free Act of 2010. Our current lunch price for PPS students is $1.75. Based on the calculation that is provided in your packet and the methodology that we have to use, we need to increase the price by 10 cent to make that price 1.85. And a 10 cent increase is the maximum increase that we can have for a year. So that price at 1.85 is included in the budget that you'll see presented tonight, and everything will be made updated by the Food Services Department for next year.
So when we approve the budget tonight, we're actually approving this, because this, this item is for discussion. We don't.
Yes, sir.
When we approve the budget, this is included in, in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this, board members understand that, because I was looking at discussion, and I thought that needed to be approved, so that is in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any, any discussion by board members concerning this school lunch program? 10 cents increase, so not much we can do about it.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Simply because I know we're increasing the lunch price by $1.85, is that for free and reduced, or is that everybody's price? So if my kid wants to buy pizza one day next year, it's a buck eighty-five for him if he's not on free and reduced? Or does that lunch price go up as well?
That is the, the current price that we have, so the reduced would obviously, I believe that will go up a little bit as well.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, we move on to budget and planning, and this is discussion. This is the FY 2018-19 capital report and the Student Activity Fund Report. And this will be Doc, I want to call you Dr. Falk, Mr. Falk?
All right, we have provided in your packet this evening the final copies of the FY 2018-19 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is for the entire school division, and the Student Activity Fund Report, which is for each school's activity fund. The auditors have completed their work on this document, on these documents. I'm happy to report that Portsmouth Public Schools received unmodified or clean opinions on both reports. That's the best report you can receive.
Absolutely.
Comment man language. Based on the auditors, from the letters from the auditors in your packet, you'll see that there were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements or difficulties encountered when they were performing the audits. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank my team, the members of the Finance Department, that assisted in the conduct of these audits under the guidance and management of our Director of Accounting, Larissa Harris. And with that, we, they're in your packet as reviewed, we will post these online, probably, if not tomorrow, early next week, so the public can look at them as well.
Very good. That is the best. Always, when I order, just give me that report. That's the best you can, that's the best you can do. So I'm very pleased. Thank you, Mr. Falk and your staff. We really appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving right on, the next item you have in your packet is for discussion. Dr. Bracy, are you going to be talking about this policies from VBS, the SBA? Or is that Ms. Allen? I can't, Dr. Bracy, you gotta unmute yourself. Dr. Bracy?
I'm with you.
There you go. Are you, are you, are you gonna address this, or is?
Dr. Karmadi is gonna address it, and as you mentioned, you missed, Mrs. Allen is on the policy committee. Yeah, but Dr. Karmadi will present this.
All right, Dr. Mark, Dr. Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Dr. Bracy. Actually, Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Allen are on the committee. We put these policies forth as amended by the Virginia School Board Association. In other words, we didn't do any tinkering with them. They have been presented to the board as they came to us from VSB.
Now, this is for discussion, and so we will be voting on these at the June meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This will give us time to, to read. I've read some of them, I haven't read all of them, but I got to read some of them. Unless Ms. Williams and Ms. Allen want to address any of them?
Well, Ms. Williams speaking, we, we looked over everything and we agreed with, I, in fact, I agree with Dr. Karmadi. There were no changes. They were from VSB, so I think Ms. Allen and I both said that they looked in order to us.
Very good. Ms. Allen, did you want to make any comment?
I concur with everything that Ms. Patilla said. We both have read through the policy. It was an extensive process, but everything is in order.
All right, so we will be voting on this in, at our June meeting. Okay? All right, the next item on the agenda is one we've all been waiting for, and that is consideration of the final school board operating budget for 2021. And I believe that is going to Dr. Bracy or Mr. Falk?
Yes, sir, it'll be a combination of both of us.
Okay, thank you. And, and we do appreciate the delivery of our, of our budgets to our homes. That was very nice. Thank you very much.
Yes.
And you should also have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation before you as well. It was, Ms. Chan was uploading it in four dots.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Thank you, thank you for being, for doing that.
All right. Well, good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, members of the school board. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the school board's final fiscal year 2021 budget for your consideration. The world has changed dramatically since the school board approved the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget on April 2nd. Since that time, we've carefully monitored and reviewed information provided to us by federal, state, and local appropriating bodies to determine the effects that COVID-19 would have on our funding and operations. As we will share with you in this presentation, PPS is facing revenue shortfalls that were required to address, to be addressed in this budget. Please know that many difficult decisions and expenditure reductions had to be made in order to present a balanced budget. However, please understand that our number one priority in this budget was to ensure that we minimize the impact of any cuts on the quality of classroom instruction, operations, and the continuity of learning that we provide to our students. We also wanted to demonstrate to our employees that we always appreciate their efforts and hard work that they put forth to ensure that we provide the highest quality of education to our students and their families. This even, this is even more important currently as we face the challenges that COVID-19 has placed before us. We want to thank everyone who participated in the fiscal year 2021 budget process to help us develop a budget that provided for the needs of all the 13,000-plus PPS students and their families. We've all been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, and our budget process was not immune to their effects either. We've monitored developments from Washington, Richmond, and here locally in Portsmouth to determine the effects on our budget. Tonight, our CFO, Mr. Theodore Falk, will walk you and our viewers through the revisions made to the fiscal year 2020-21 budget and the effects that COVID-19 has had on the budget process. We will start with a look at the revenue forecast that's before you now. Mr. Falk? Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Good evening again, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, and members of the school board. The chart that we show before you shows the revenues, 2021 revenues pre and post-COVID-19 comparisons. And we wanted to show you this because it shows a, a reduction in revenue, and we wanted to make sure you understand where these reductions were coming from. So when comparing our city revenue first, you will notice a reduction in revenue on this slide of about $2.8 million. Let me explain it is to you to give you a little more clarity. The final city budget that was approved by City Council on May 2nd appropriated $56,725,696 to PPS. That amount fully funded our request in our school board proposed budget of $56,496,045, and adding an additional $229,651,725,696. However, the city informed us late in, in April that while the PPS total appropriation was 56.7 million, they estimated that the city would have a revenue loss of about 11.7 million based on COVID-19 effects. So our share of that loss, based on the school funding formula, the 30.23%, would total about $3 million, $3,30,279 to be exact. So this budget includes what you see on the screen, $53,722,417 as the city estimate for local revenue, and we've included a contingency for the $3 million that they've said they have to hold back because revenue estimates may not match what they thought back in April. And they've also said that if additional revenue was allocated during the year, the city would have a better estimate, and they could allocate that to us. So based on that, their allocation is $56,725,696, of which in this budget, we have $53,772,417 as the guaranteed local revenue at this point that we can put in our budget. We put in a contingency of $3 million to cover any revenue shortfalls. Also, you see here on the state side, in the General Assembly approved budget, based on our proposed budget from April, there was a decrease of $492,679. So in total, the decrease or the revenue shortfall was $3,266,307. So that, I'll make this a little plainer on the next slide. So again, state revenue shortfalls, $492,679. Local revenue shortfall of $2,773,0628 gives us a grand total for reductions of $3,266,307. And then again, keep in mind that we have a contingency on the revenue and the expenditure side for $3 million. In the case that other revenue would show up, we would then allocate that to other expenses, expenditures that we could designate at that time. So let's move on to happier news instead of talking about cuts right now. Let's give you a summary of what are some of the major initiatives and items that are included in this. Staff raises. As you see on this slide, the budget retains the 2% staff raise for all employees. The total cost of that raise is still $2.3 million, and we're pleased that we were able to reward our hardworking and dedicated employees with this proposed raise. What else is, is included? In addition to staff raises, we have about $656,000 of other additional positions that were included in this budget on the instructional, student support, and school climate and safety side. And I'll walk through each one of these categories going forward. On the instructional side, we added a barbering teacher at IC Norcom to continue the CTE expansion of that program. We added three special ed program specialists to help with IEPs and managing our special needs students. We added a graduation coach, excuse me, school-to-career transition lead for our CTE program to help monitor and, and help support that program. We also added a graduation coach at Churchland High School. That was the only school that did not have a graduation coach, so we wanted to make sure that was equitable at Churchland High School. And then lastly, we added PALS instructional assistance for to help some of our, our youngest students matriculate and, and get the skills that they needed. So the total of those instructional additions are $499,102. Moving on to students.
Mr. Falk, would you go back to that slide? Would you go back to that slide? I just wanted to ask the board members if you had any, any questions. I know that we needed the special ed and the CTE. We had talked about the graduation coach and the PALS, and I'm glad to see that, that we have the barbering teacher at, at Norcom. I just wondered if any board members had any questions concerning those instructional additions. Hearing none? Go ahead.
All right. Moving on to student support, we've added a central nurse to provide support to our schools when our nurses are absent, or when there's a need for another resource to provide additional support buildings or building or buildings. And then we also added funding to support the equity adjustments that we had presented to the board back in December. This will begin, be the beginning of a multi-year effort to adjust the salaries of the nurses to try to attain equity with their peers around the area. And these additions to student supports will cost about $131,757.
And this begins mid-year?
No, that, that will begin July 1st.
That, oh, that's good. Okay, all right. I'm glad that we, I'm glad we're getting the nurses straight. I mean, I'm glad we, we're getting that resolved, because that's, that's been a, that's been an issue. So thank you.
No problem. And then, and then lastly, we're adding a school security officer at Churchland Middle School. They have two currently. We're adding a third, so they have coverage on all three floors of that building. And other budget additions of about $3.3 million, these are some of the highlights of those. We increased CESEP tuition costs, because obviously that cost is growing. Tuition for our CTCC programs, early college, first college, as well as any dual enrollment classes. Professional development and staff training, obviously, we want to be, have people that are well-trained and well-versed in instructional and other strategies, so we added money there. Hero Resources software subscription increases on their licenses.
Dr. Wen, would you go back to that, that slide? Dr. Wen, could you address the professional development and staff training specifically? What, what are we going to be doing in that area? Dr. Wen? Are they not on?
I'm sorry, I was having trouble unmuting.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, a clarification of professional development and staff training. Is that all instruction, or is that a combination of, of staff report and instruction? I'd just like the more details about that.
That's division-wide staff training. That includes everything from teachers to instructional assistants to classified staff. We have all of our staff, all of our school improvement plans are tied to professional development. And this is also going to be needed this year because of the training that we will have to do with our digital learning programs and virtual learning.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Going forward with budgetary additions, we added money to the fleet management line to ensure that we had enough to cover that contract with the city. We're upgrading our transportation routing software, and we wanted to make sure that we did that in conjunction with some of the other initiatives that were going on. Also, obviously, utility costs, as they rise, we have to make sure we keep up with that. And then lastly, increasing the general fund transfer to cover our risk management expenditure.
Now, on number five, are we getting, are we getting receipts about when our vehicles are repaired? I know that that was an issue at one time, that we had asked the city to give us that. Have we gotten anything from that yet, from the city? I mean, we just paid out, we're paying out all this money, and we don't know what vehicles or what maintenance is being performed, because they're not giving, they were not giving us any kind of documentation. No, we, the board members, some of the board members have asked for that. Have we been getting that?
No, we hadn't, we haven't been receiving that, Mr. Parent. If you remember, that, that was a, that, that came up in our, in our joint meeting.
Right.
We were discussing that, and we talked initially at that time, we were under the assumption that the city was getting out of the business, and that's why we were looking to, to see who else could provide this service for us, if the city was not going to be providing that. But, but after that, we learned that they never had any, any intentions of, of going away from managing the fleet. So with that, we've had conversations with Dr. Patton and Dr. Simmons, with, with her folks in operations there, and part of what this agreement will include is a detailed report on the services that are being provided for.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You know, Wen?
Mr. Lam?
What was it?
Dr. Bracy, I mean, even though they've said that they're going to give you a detailed report on this, I have to agree with Chairman Parent. I mean, I've been one that's been asking for the receipts and so forth. Do we have any idea when exactly we're going to get this detailed report? Because they've been saying this on and off now for almost two years.
I don't have the exact time of when, Mr. Lamb. Dr. Patton made it seem as though as moving forward with it, that this would be a part of it since we're entering a new agreement, the cost of this agreement has increased, and part of our entering into it is that we need those detailed receipts. She is well aware of that, so that is something that I expect us to receive. But as of right now, for this past year, no, we haven't received, what we have received hasn't been detailed. But we have received some information to that, and she realizes herself that that's not happening. So that's not something that, that she's not trying to say that we are receiving. But moving forward, our, our best guess is to think that that will be coming based on the dialogue that we have. And I will follow up with her in writing in regards to that.
And Dr. Bracy, on number eight, Mr. Carroll might, no more. We have, have we gotten any response from the Attorney General Herring about our risk management? Have we gotten any kind of an opinion?
No, sir.
So at the end of the year, if we, if, if we are, if we have a shortfall and can't meet our expenses, then, Mr. Falk, what do we do? We have to go back to the city? I mean, because that $5.1 million is sitting in a fund, and we've asked for 2.1, was it 1.9 or 2.9 million dollars of that money? And we still haven't gotten it yet.
And, and Mr. Parent?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, I think I shared with Dr. Bracy that I did, Senator Lucas followed up with the Attorney General's office.
Oh.
He had a, a conference call. She, she had me and the person in the office trying to follow up. But because, you know, of the pandemic.
Right.
A lot of people working from home, not being there, they, they, they said they had a backlog. But of course, they were going to try to get to it as soon as they could, which still didn't, you know, tell you much. But Senator Lucas did put me on the phone with them when I asked the question. If she had forwarded to the Attorney General for the opinion, and she had whatever Mr. Carroll had sent her, and they pulled it up, they had it, and she wanted me to hear what they had to say. So they.
Very good.
COVID-19 and the backlog, so.
Right.
A few.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that update.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? All right, moving on. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, I like you and, and Dr. Bracy and, and Ms. Williams, and we're, in fact, probably all of us on this board, I'm still a little frustrated with, with these two items that, that continues going on. I mean, after all, even with the slide presentation, they're showing that we have to make an increase in general funds. Because of paying out, now it's totaling several millions of dollars for weight management, and we still can't, and we still don't got those receipts. And I mean, again, it just does not make sense that we're still going down this road over and over and over at this point, and we still haven't got no resolution off of 2.9, and I understand we're going through the Attorney General, and that's, that's fine, that's appropriate. But I'm still very concerned with, with real, we're constantly being told that things are coming, and yet, they haven't came, and now we're having to go back into our own budget. And now we're having to go back into our own budget and budget in things so that we make sure that we're not, you know, overspending. When these are, you know, resources that are vital, that that could be going into our classrooms, into our teachers, into our programs. And yet, all we keep hearing over and over and over here is the fact that, you know, things are coming. But I I'm just frustrated with it. And and I would like to get something more than than just empty words at this point.
Well, you know, we're going into election and that's going to start heating up in September through November. And then hopefully in January, we might have uh new city council members that, and that we're going to have to address it. I, Mr. Lam, I don't, to be honest with you, and I don't think that this is going to be resolved this year. I think that they're going to put this off as long as they can. And uh, but I'm with you. I am very frustrated. I I it's got to be addressed. And um, I mean, we've done, all we can do as a board, uh, waiting for the opinion. And um, but you know, that's just an opinion. We may have to take that, Mr. Carroll may have to, uh, we may have to go to court um with our opinion and see what we can, if if they're not willing to resolve it before the end of the year. And I'll be honest with you, I don't think that's going to happen. But anyway, miracles happen every day. So.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Parent?
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Mr. Lam and what you're saying because we've been going back and forth with this for another fleet problem for the last two, three, four years, we never And as far as um, you know, we we decided to ask for the opinion to take the trying to be be nice or on one accord with them. But it is, as you said, it is just an opinion. So if we decide that we need to go to court to fight for our 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 resources, for our teachers, our risk management, then that's something that we may have to do. Because I I really don't think they have any in- intention at all of uh trying to resolve any of these ongoing issues that continue to be ongoing.
Right.
Either we, you know, either we we do that or, like you said, in January, hopefully, we'll have some people that will at least communicate and work with us.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments from board members?
Mr. Parent, this is Ms. Hans.
Ms. Heinz.
Um, thank you. And while we're talking about number eight, the increase in general fund transfers, how much of this three point three million that we have um that we've discussed on these two slides? How much is going into the general fund to cover it? Is it the two point one? Or is this, are we covering the summer slot, you know, the summer, is this the summer cover that we've talked about?
No, actually, the the summer, the summer amount, they actually allocated to us. Um, they basically gave us a fourth of our total risk management budget for the first three months of the year. So they, we we settled that part. This is based on general increases um in health insurance cost, claims cost, as well as our property casualty workers comp. That we we normally allocate a portion of that to the general fund. Um, and the general fund takes care of some of those particular costs uh going forward. But the city did appropriate in the first quarter of the year enough where we can manage our risk management cash flow uh versus what was done um in the past. So they did.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I want to make sure that the the summer cover is there and we're not having to go back and play, you know, the game this year like we had this year. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Alright, Mr. Falk, next.
Alright, so now we're going to go to the 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 expenditure reductions. Um, as I stated earlier in this presentation, the effect of COVID nineteen has caused a revenue shortfall of approximately uh three point three million dollars for the FY twenty twenty-one budget. So on the next slides, I'm going to provide you with a listing of expenditure reductions that were required to balance this budget. We propose, we propose the following position of reduction. One, six school counselors. If you recall, the General Assembly in their original budget had put in a requirement that they would uh reduce the staffing rate, or reduce the per student ratios per guidance counselor. And so they added additional funds to hire new guidance counselors. Well, in the final budget, they removed that, they removed the money and they removed the requirement. So we're gonna, we we're gonna um propose a reduction in the counselors since the state has changed the ratios. Um, secondly, the testing supervisor uh position that we had originally um presented. Because obviously, uncertainty around what the testing requirements will be going forward. Um, three middle school teachers and then also the three um attendance liaison. Moving forward in other reductions, um, we we reduced the school library upgrades. If you recall, this was gonna uh have renovations at three of our uh laboratories totally. And then add what we call maker spaces, 3D printers, so on and so forth, to all of our other libraries. That's the total cost of five hundred and nineteen thousand. Uh, we removed the replacement vehicles and equipment for operation and maintenance. That's four hundred thousand. Uh, the next one, hardware and software purchases for technology that included um Chromebooks, laptop replacements, so on and so forth. However, the bright side of that is that we have CARES Act money, uh, the funding that the federal government provided for in response to COVID nineteen, as well as some grant funds, um, and some of our grants that can be redirected uh for technology purchases. So we will probably be able to cover that one point five um with CARES Act as well as other grant funds. And then lastly, the local match for the Virginia Preschool Initiative, um, for our pre-K students. The state reduced the revenue by about four or five hundred thousand dollars. And so that reduced our local match as well. So our local match reduced in relation to the reduction in the state revenue for that program. Uh, so we made that reduction there. All of those personnel and and these other reductions totaled the three million, two hundred sixty-six thousand, three oh seven that I shared with you early in this presentation. And that's what we did to balance this budget.
Okay, board members, do you have any questions?
Mr. Parent?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the reduced local match for VPI, Mr. Falk, is that reducing seats for our preschool? It's just the funding for?
It's the funding for. Like, next year, we have four hundred and seventy-nine seats. They did not change the seats, but they changed the funding. They had, um, I believe they were going to go up twenty-five percent per student on the per student amount. And when they approved the final budget, they uh tabled that and went back to the original amount that we were going to get before. So we still have four hundred and seventy-nine slots, but they just didn't provide enough, the same amount of money for that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Lam?
Yeah, a real quick question here was, okay, so, I mean, I'm looking at this and unfortunately, you know, we're we're in a in a time that's was unpredictable, unfortunate, I I I mean, you know, I'm trying to fit a square into a uh into a circle in in many ways with this budget, and and I get that. Um, as I, as I'm going through this, as Mr. Falk has has actually pointed out, and he did very well with that. I I'm looking at some of this stuff and just thinking that because of necessary increases um that we have to pay, such as utilities and this this fleet management that we still, like we said, I can't get a bill. Other things that's important, that we desperately need, is is being put on the side. And and I understand and I and I get it. I guess um this is probably going to be directed more toward um curriculum and instruction and Dr. Bracy as well with this. So I understand that the six school counselors, which is very unfortunate because that is definitely a a high need that we have. I get it from the state cuts, so we went there. As far as the three middle school um music positions, since we don't have those music teachers there, what exactly are we doing? What will we do next uh next school year with that? Meaning, if we don't have a full-time one there, how are students going to actually have music, appreciative music class? And then the attendance liaison officers, the whole point of adding that in there as well was because we are under this mandate that it does affect accreditation with regards to attendance. And we needed those three attendance officers added in there um to help with the workload and so forth. And so with taking this out, is that actually going to hinder us in regards to the attendance policy, in regards to accreditation? Because of we're adding more of a workload onto those current attendance officers?
First, let me, let me, hold on, let me make sure. Can you hear me? I want to make sure I'm unmuted. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So, Mr. Lam, for the the music teachers, what we were, what we've tried to do, and this is not the first year, maybe the second um or third year, you've seen the music teachers for middle school on the budget. Currently, our high school teachers spend part of their day at the middle school. So it's not like they're going without. We were trying to have a dedicated teacher to each each school, each middle school, where they would have their own middle school, only own middle school music teacher. That way, it could potentially give them uh more course offerings. But they do have the services. We just wanted to expand it and also allow the high school teachers to actually expand on the programs that they have at the high school level. But in doing this, it's no change from last year. So they will receive the services. We were just trying to put a dedicated person in each of those schools to maybe enhance the the program there. For the, for the attendance officers, this would, this came as a a recommendation. As you know, we, now that attendance is part of the accreditation process, we wanted to increase the officers. Well, one thing that happened with this year is that, of course, there's no, there's no accreditation being considered. So attendance is not even on the table. And moving forward, one of the reasons that we looked at this, we said, because there's so much uncertainty right now in terms of whether or not we will be going back or not. Not to say that the attendance officers won't be important, because they will. Even if we start the school year and we're doing our distance learning, attendance officers are going to be important because if you have students that are not logging in, then those attendance officers will be asked to go out and check to see why students are not participating in the lesson. But we think even if we're at that point, that we will have enough officers to be able to do that. And looking at the the cuts that we that we needed to make to get within that budgeted amount, we felt that we could use our current attendance officers to do so, to do this. And worst case, you know, we could always look at additional um time for them if that was needed as well. And rather than their seven or seven and a half days scheduled that they already have. So we, that's that's how we came up with those recommendations.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from board, uh, Ms. Atkinson?
Yes, Chairman Parent. So, um, my questions, I'm trying to stretch off as I had the same questions as uh Board Member Lam. Um, so my question is, what is going to be the ratio per student, per a counselor now? And do we have a projected date on when we will get the grant from uh the CARES Act? Because if in fact we do not start school on time, we're going to want to get um those Chromebooks out to students so they are able to access um their assignments for those who don't have it. So we, do we have a projected date or has the state given us any guidance on that?
Mr. Falk probably has a little bit more on that, the 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 money is there. I think they're walking us through now, coming up with the application process.
Um, the money is there. Uh, we've allocated about five point three million dollars. Um, the state is doing application webinars and Zoom meetings to try to give us good, more information about it. Um, the big hangup right now is the way that that uh law was written. Normally, the the law is written and it for private school allocations. Right now, we don't really know exactly what the private school allocation will be. Normally, private school allocations are based on, in the way, this application was based on Title I guidance, which is for
Right.
for lower-income students. They base it on the number of lower-income students that that private school has. This um legislation was actually written and it says total students to the private school. So the the private schools will get a portion of that five point three million dollars. Um, what normally, we kind of know what that is. Now it was uncertain. So we're trying to work that out with the State Department. We have to do surveys to each private school as we do with Title I, or with Title II and Title III. And we have to get those numbers to then calculate how much EPS is going to get. And then we can actually start formulating, we can start formulating our plans, but we need to know what the number is going to. And that's where we are right now. The video, we obviously has to approve that application uh before we can start spending those dollars. And they said it will be a quick turnaround, but we still need to make sure that we know the totality of what we have. So.
Is it Court Street? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Chairman Parent, just to follow up. And and this is a good report, um, Vice Chair Patillo and Board Member Lam is, um, are we going to take some of those recommendations for our technology plan and then um the school uh counselor per student ratio? What's that number?
Um, it said at the state mandated level, I mean, and you're saying right now, we're under the state mandated levels? I don't have, we, I don't have the the actual per school number right now, but we're at this, we're we're well under the state uh level. If you recall, last year, we added uh counselors uh based on the state's appropriation in this fiscal year of of money to get us under those those ratios. But um this is basically keeping those ratios the same.
And as as far as Well, how many part? Go ahead, this, go ahead, President Patillo.
And to answer the second part of your question, Board Maxon, as far as the technology, uh, the suggestions that we're giving on that, on that report, they're actually going to do a trial run of all of those to try to see how they work and how they meet the needs of our students and families. So um, there's no one uh, you know, guaranteed way to to solve this issue, but they are going to test, start testing all of those uh pretty quickly. And there is a six-week uh turnaround time on most of the IFC up there. So they're working diligently now to try to see what we can uh, what we can do as far as what we want to order and how will it work for our families and our students.
Thank you.
Um, you were talking about the private schools. How, is it Court Street and Portsmouth Christian? Or Portsmouth Catholic?
We have, I know, six, and there may be a few others. We use the Virginia uh Council of Private Education list. That's what the Virginia Department of Education asked us to use. I believe there are six or seven on that list
Right.
in the city of Portsmouth. And we send out surveys, not only for this particular grant, but Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV for private school participation. And many of them participate, some opt not to, but many participate in that grant. And then we follow all the guidance and the regulations that are provided under the grant to get the money to them to have a meaningful consultation, is what it's called with them, about goals and objectives and programs and so on and so forth. So.
Alright, when you say we have six, of the six, how many actually, normally, in years past, we've only had uh Court Street and Portsmouth Catholic Elementary. Um, Sweet Haven and the others.
Haven doesn't. Um, I I can get back to you on that. I believe it's three or four, but don't hold me to that number.
Wow, okay.
And I'll get back to you on that to tell you how many participate in our other grants. The the major issue at the national level is the amount of money that is being allocated out of those funds because it's on a different um, different scale than what it normally is. As I said, total population versus total free and reduced lunch population. So.
So if the private school, the six private schools, if if only two of them participate, you're telling me that all of them are going to get a piece of this pie?
No, they have to opt in to participate and all.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to understand that, that just because you're a private school, you don't automatically get this. I just wanted to make sure. That's why I asked the schools, how many schools of the six actually participate? So if they participate, they'll get a piece of this. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Uh, Mr. Parent?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I went back to my notes from the meeting when we did this presentation.
I went back to my notes from the meeting when we did this presentation to answer Board Member Atkinson's question about the school guidance counselors. Currently, we have three hundred and twenty-five to one is the state mandate for counselors. The increase or the push to get more counselors at high school was to go from three twenty-five to three hundred to one. And then at middle school was three seventy to three twenty-five to one. And then elementary was four fifty-five to three seventy-five to one. So that's what we had originally discussed. So it sounds like we're going back to the original numbers, which we have more than what is required. But that gives you some numbers, Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Board Member Haas.
You're welcome, Sweetie.
Okay.
All right, so.
Do you have, I do have one more question. I'm sorry. And this goes back to the state budget. Mr. Falk, when we talked about the budget, and we talked about the raises for our, for our staff, when we originally talked, we had talked about doing three, and now we're doing two. In the approved state budget, are we still getting credit? Is there still the five percent raise for teachers over the biennium? Or how is this all going to shake out now? Because I haven't had time to review the biennium budget. So originally in the state budget, there was the five percent increase that we could do over two. And that we get credit for anything that we do now. So how does that shake out with the new budget?
They removed all raise revenue from this budget. As well as, so there's no revenue in the state budget that dedicated for the raise. They removed that, or they tabled it, as they call it. So as they come back to reconvene session, if there are additional revenues, they could allocate that to that area. But they remove the, the, the raise revenue out of.
So we are going ahead with our raise, even though it is not, I, I hate to say mandated by the state, even though we're not being incentivized by the state to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And keep in mind, we received about eight million, about eight point one million dollars in an increase in state because of re-benchmarking this year. This is the first year of the biennium. So that money can be used for that purpose. And, and that's why we were able to continue to keep that in because of re-benchmarking. If this was the second year of a biennium, it wouldn't have happened.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification, sir.
Uh, Chair Parent?
Yes, sir.
I also wanted to just reiterate my, my thanks to the Finance Committee, uh, Mr. Falk and his team. Because other school divisions are currently canceling their raises for their staff fiscal year, and we were able to still keep those for hours. And that's something major that all of us would like for our staff to have for the next fiscal years. I want to thank them for making that happen and found the reductions necessary to do so.
Absolutely, yeah. And a lot of furloughs, too. All right, Mr. Falk?
All right, so.
You want to continue?
This slide shows you the total general fund budget for the year. The total general fund budget is about a hundred and sixty million dollars. But keep in mind, of that one sixty, three million dollars is in contingency. So it's roughly one hundred and fifty-seven million dollars with a three million dollar contingency for any additional local revenue that we may receive after revenue projections are done by the city.
Everybody understand that? Yep.
And just to, to elaborate on that as well, we were also told by the city in, in their, in their approval of the budget, um, past week, as well as some communication. They're moving back to a quarterly appropriation schedule, mainly to make sure that their revenue collections are keeping up with what they've originally thought they would receive during, during the year. So they're going to monitor, at the end of each quarter, they're going to evaluate, and they'll communicate to us whether there'll be a true-up. Meaning we'll get more revenue over the year, up, up to the fifty-six, seven. We won't get anything below, beyond the fifty-six, seven that's appropriated. But we may get more than the fifty-three point seven that they've estimated may be our number this year. Or whether revenue reductions will need to happen. So we'll have to carefully monitor this budget on the local side to make sure that we're in line. And then on the flip side of that, the state side, state sales tax as well as lottery. There are going to be effects to that in FY nineteen twenty, and the state hasn't told us how they're going to fix those yet. Because their, their budget has not made any changes for sales tax or lottery, sure falls, as well as in twenty twenty-one. But we'll have to monitor those carefully to make sure that we can make any adjustments we need to make going forward. So I would love to say that this is a set in stone number, but truthfully, we'll be monitoring this budget from now until the end of the, of the year because of these sales tax and lottery kind of question marks. And the state did not change any of those projections in their state budget. They will do that in August, September, October, when they come back. And they haven't told us how they're going to do that.
With the local revenue, we are pretty well assured that we're going to get fifty-three, seven, twenty-two, four, seventeen.
That is their estimate. They could, if revenues don't come in, they could come back and say, we need to make adjustments to that. So I, I wanted to make sure that was clear, because, and they're not saying they're going to do that. But obviously, as revenues come in during the year, they'll have to monitor what that means for the city and then our portion of those revenues as well.
So in the middle of the year, if we don't, if we see that we're going to get less then we got, we're going to have to go back to this budget and find ways that we can cut it.
Yes, sir.
Because once we give the two percent, you can't, you can't take that back, but we'll have to find other ways that. Uh, and it may involve furloughs or layoffs with, in some areas, unless you're going to cut. Sir?
Cut the fleet maintenance.
Yeah, yeah. All right, all right, Mr., have you finished, Mr. Um, oh, there we go.
Mr. Parent, I'm sorry, Mr. Parent, Mr. Falk, can I ask one? I do appreciate in your budget book, there is a, I, I call it the asterisk line, but it's the information presented is based prelim, on preliminary revenue and expenditure estimates, and is subject to change as new information is released. So that's, that's put out there in the budget book. I want to make sure. Exactly. And this is more of a question for Ms. Duran with HR. In our contracts for employees, do we have a non-appropriations bit in our contracts? So in case we do have to do furloughs, are we covered in our contracts? That we have the, the non-appropriations clause, because I know that came in after about two thousand eight, two thousand nine. All of a sudden, that language was in our contracts.
Right.
So she's, she's shaking her head yes, that we do have that in our contracts.
And you're, you're exactly right. We have had that in our contracts since, uh, around two thousand and eight, where it talks about any changes in the budget may affect the offer of employment and this contract being able to be fulfilled.
Okay.
Have that on the early commitments that we offer people as well.
Not that, not that I want us to get there. However, the fluid situation that Mr. Falk has just described with this budget. This is a, I'm going to call it the slip and slide budget, Mr. Falk. That's the nickname for this budget right now. But it, it is, it's going to be a very fluid situation. And in the purchasing department, I guess that falls to you too, Mr. Falk. In our, in our contracts that we sign with vendors, we have non-appropriation language in those contracts. So when we do have, when, if, how, we have to start finding, you know, three hundred thousand dollars or whatever. We have that language so that we can cease and assist with those contracts, and it's legal.
Yes, ma'am. That's in the general conditions on all of our contracts, that lovely ten, fifteen-page document within the bid process, um, that's there. There's a non-appropriation of funds clause there as well.
Okay, I just, you know, not that that's where you want to go. However, if we do have to go there, I want to make sure that it's legal and everybody is working off the same understandings. Thank you.
And Ms. Heinz, it was, it's my understanding that, um, in our budget meeting that we had, you know, at the end of the year, the surplus that, that we have to reappropriate back to the city. Dr. Bracy, didn't you and, and Mr. Falk have a, a, a meeting with Dr. Patton? An understanding that we would use those fun, funds for technology? Is that correct? Bracy, Mr. Falk?
Yeah, I'm here. Yes, Dr. Patton and I have had a discussion. Can you hear me, Mr. Parent?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, all right. Dr. Patton and I have had.
I can hear you.
Okay, Dr. Patton, Dr. Patton and I have had a conversation in regards to end of year funds. Mr. Falk and I are going to be meeting tomorrow to have a little further discussion on what that will look like. In the last year, what we did, we gave the city a projection of what our spending plan would look like for unspent, uh, undesignated funds. So we're working, put something together now, and a lot of that will be focused on the, the, the technology needs, what's devices, of that such, so that we can move forward with that. But she is aware of that. And in addition to that, the city is also, is going, they're going to receive some CARES Act funding as well. And she has also asked as part of our plan to just submit that to her. And we may be able to use a portion of their CARES Act funding also. Our Dean has been working with the, the city IT person as we look at connectivity for our students, the community as well. So there may be a chance that we can use some of their CARES Act funding as well. So yeah, those, the dialogue has been there. We're just working now to put together a, a potential list and cost that could be associated with that for end of year funds.
Now, when Dr. Patton, and I don't mean any disrespect, but honestly, I don't trust Dr. Patton. What she says verbally to you or to any board member is that I would, I would certainly hope that we would have that in, in writing. So we don't have to go back, that she said, you said, and because once we start ordering this technology, there's no going back. I just don't trust Dr. Patton. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Don't mean it, any disrespect, but, um, you know, we're in a situation, and they're in a situation that, um, I just don't, when you have a, a meeting with her, and she tells you that. I hope that she would put it in writing, or you would ask her, that needs, the board would like that to be in writing so that there's no misunderstanding of what was said, because we've been down that road before, and I don't want to go down that road again. Especially with this risk management.
Right, I understand exactly what you're saying. What we will do, we will definitely submit our information that we need to her in writing.
Right.
And in the years past, she hadn't responded to that. She's acknowledged that she received it. That's not, that's not anything that's binding. But if we know that we're going to have a surplus of funds, we don't wait until the end to ask for permission. We can, we go ahead and usually spend what we usually have. Technology is one of those that if we, if we can place the order, we can usually get them back. What, what makes it a little difficult now is that everybody is after the same thing. You know, everybody needs
Sure.
Chromebooks, you know, everybody needs the, 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 the hotspots. So as soon as we have a better project, a projection of where we are with the end of year funding, we're going to go ahead and start making some of these purchases now with some of the end of year funds that we think will be available.
Now, included in technology, are y'all looking at trying to buy as much of the PPEs? Because I feel like we're going to need that in whenever we start school. Hand sanitizers and masks and thermometers and things like that.
That, that was something, that was something else we covered in our meeting, Mr. Parent. They, they have already gotten in a lot of, a lot of the PPE that was requested back in March of this year. And they're tying into state contracts now to make it easier to receive PPE for the future. So they are on top of that order as much as they can, but by time that the state contracts will help them out by acquiring, by times the state contracts.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Parent, I do have one more question.
Sure.
And this would be for HR and for purchasing. Are we doing purchasing freezes or hiring freezes now? To make sure with the, with the uncertainty of the, the next thirty days from the State Department and those funds. Are we looking at doing freezes now? And are we looking at doing freezes next year since we are on the, um, the slide? The, you know, the slip and slide budget.
Right now, we don't have any freezes in effect for next year, but we do have them in effect for the remainder of this school year. We're not hiring anyone who's going to start before next year. But the positions that we are filling now are according to the ones that have already been allocated for the current, uh, school year. So we're not basing our staffing on any additional positions being in the budget. We are using the numbers that we've gotten for retirements and resignations to staff at this time.
Do you know what the retire, do you know what the retirement number is right now? Number of, of, of employees that will, that will be retiring? Do you have that?
I don't have the exact number, Mr. Parent, but I'm happy to pull that information and send that to the board.
Okay, I just wondered, how many people are going to be retiring and?
I have a question. I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Barnes.
Um, and hopefully it doesn't come to this, but with the slip and slide budget, as one of our members stated, how will we determine who is being laid off?
We have a policy for that, Mr. Barnes, that includes a guide for furloughs.
You're on mute now.
So the policy gives us the guidance on who we're supposed to furlough first. It's typically last in, first out. So those who have the most seniority with the school division are the last ones to go.
Thank you.
We have a policy.
Any other questions, board members? All right, Mr. Falk?
Um, going to the next slide, the total of our, all our funds is two hundred and ten point four million dollars. There were major changes in the other slides outside of the grants with the reduction in the VPI, um, funding. But this is the total amount of our budget, two hundred and ten million, three hundred and sixty thousand, two eighty-three.
Now, Mr. Falk, we, we have padded, if you go back to that slide again before you switch. We padded a little bit of the grant fund, because you know, during the year, we get grants, we don't, you know, the state always comes out with special grants, and then we apply for them and get them, and then we have to go to City Council and for, for them to approve the, their appropriation, and that's two or three months. So we've kind of put extra money in that nineteen point one million for any additional, uh, projected grants.
That, that nineteen point one does not cover the carryover. So let me, let me make that clear. The nineteen point one is the amount of grants that we expect to receive at this point with the grant programs we have already outlined. So that's what that includes. Now, from, from your, your question, and I'll go a little deeper. The U.S. Department of Education has extended many of the, the, the deadlines that would have happened this September for an additional year. So we have an additional year to spend those dollars, which may help us to do some of those things that we need to do. Because while we were shut down, we couldn't spend certain funds that we would have spent while we were shut down. So those funds are available now for whatever are the required or those initiatives that we can spend the money on to get us ready for whatever the next phase of education will look like. So that, that's a good thing, because now we have an additional year to spend those dollars. And they don't have to go back to the federal government on September thirtieth of this year.
That's great. That's good. Thank you. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, because every, it seems like we get these new grants, and then we have to send them to City Council, and then they, there's a lag on when we can, you know, we've gone through this before. It's a lag of when they actually approve it, okay? And we can't implement the grant until they approve it. So anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I just want to give you highlights of the city's approved CIP budget. As you know.
As you know, anything above $50,000, we have to have the city manage that for us. The project they included this year was Woodrow Wilson High School Cooling Tower and Switchgear. That was 550,000, as well as continued funding for previous approved projects, such as Churchill High School's HVAC, the Mount Herman Bus Loop, and and a number of other projects that have not started yet, but are in the course of getting started now. Oh, one more question.
Go ahead, Ms. Barnes.
Um, is the track at Churchill High School included in that? The track has been appropriated on the city side. I'm not sure exactly what it was. I know they had put out a bid for that work at Churchill, but I'm not sure where they are with that. Dr. Simmons may be able to give me some guys on that. We'll get back to you on where that is. But it was appropriated last year at the end with our approach. It was about $700,000 we put in CIP that the city approved, and they did put out an RFP for that.
Thank you. And Mr. Falk, you just kind of mentioned the continuation of the HVAC system at Churchill High School.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's been going on since the building was built. So what kind of problems are we having with the HVAC system?
That I can't answer specifically. We could get you more details, but I know that that project has been on the CIP, and it's a phased project, obviously.
Long time.
If you're doing an HVAC in a high school, it takes a number of years to do that. And again, you guys have more history than I do. It may be longer than I know, but I know that there's work about to start on that HVAC project in the next few weeks, I believe, to to continue that project. And it may be that there were some issues with whatever was done in the past, they're trying to shore it up.
Well, that goes back to 2006 for me. So it's been a long time. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, that concludes what I have tonight. But I'd be remiss if I didn't thank everybody who assisted in in the preparation of this budget. It was a team effort, good example of how PPS shines every day. I want to personally thank Dwight Duren and Donna Valdez, my left and my right hands, who put a tremendous amount of time and effort in to ensure that we could produce a high quality product that is clear and accurate for the school board, for our constituents, and for anybody that uses this document. Also want to thank the school board, Dr. Bracy, Superintendent's Cabinet, for your leadership and guidance through this process. And we we hope that everything comes out well once revenues are done, and we're going to do everything we can to monitor and give our students and our community everything that they deserve in this budget. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any any questions? Because we're now ready to, you've heard the presentation, the budget, and we're ready to do a roll call vote to consider the final operating budget for 2021. What is the board's pleasure?
Vote for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, was that Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
All right, and second, all right, any discussion?
Chairman Parent, Chairman Parent, I just have one more question for Mr. Falk. The difference in the the board member, the 18768, is that because that's only six months? Okay, you got it.
Six months of an increase, you're right.
Yeah, gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, come January 1, 2021, the board's salaries will increase. I think to 10,000, right, from 5 to 10,000? Isn't that correct?
I believe so.
That's correct. Yeah. All right, anymore, any other discussion? Hearing no more discussion. Madam Clerk, do I have a motion to for approval?
I have, I
Oh, that's right, you approved, and we had a second. No more discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Ananama?
Thank you very much. We have a budget there, that's great. Before we adjourn, I wanted to ask Dr. Bracy a question. Would you update the board on the graduation procedures? I know that Virginia Beach has come out, and several others have come out. I know that you have sent out an email. Would you kind of update us where we are with that, sir?
Sure, let me, let me read my report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's not included in that, I'll be glad to
Okay.
give you some details on that. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I wanted to use my time for the report tonight to give a few updates, as well as to acknowledge some of the excellent staff members that we have. First, I'd like to take a moment to talk about graduation in our class of 2020. We're doing all that we can to ensure that we will have a great celebration for our seniors. As we have shared previously, we worked with our partners at ODU at the beginning of this closure, and we were able to secure August 1st as our postponed date. We're still hopeful that we can hold graduations at this time. That said, we want to make sure that we're prepared in case the state is not a place, at a place where reopening, where large scale events are going to be allowed. That is why we're working with our seniors to produce some videos that we could use in case we have to have a virtual graduation. It's my understanding that seniors will receive specific instructions on how to make and upload these videos beginning in the first week of June. So we just ask that they be on the lookout for those messages. Next, I want to reiterate a couple of things for our families regarding meals. First, we are partnering with Virginia Department of Social Services and taking part in the in the pandemic electronic benefit transfer, the PEBT program. Families do not have to apply for a PEBT. Social Services will issue the benefit to current, to supplement the current nutritional assistance program, SNAP. Households and non-Snap households will include children eligible for free and reduced price school meals through Virginia's SNAP EBT card system. They will mail these cards directly. Therefore, if a child was eligible to receive free or reduced price meals at a school before the school closure, they will be included in the file of eligible students to provide to Social Services. You can visit our coronavirus webpage and see a full FAQ about this program. In addition, I want to remind families that we are closed Monday, May 25th, for Memorial Day holiday. As such, families who are utilizing our feeding sites for their meals will need to pick up double meals tomorrow to cover breakfast and lunch for Monday. I also wanted to offer an update on summer school. We have, we already have more than 250 students who have signed up for our summer school program. We're excited to be able to offer this virtually. More than 1,400 of our staff members took Google Classroom training to prepare for summer school, as well as the potential use of that system moving forward. We're prepared and ready for this new way of providing summer school. And it could be that this is how we look at delivering summer school instruction moving forward each year. So we're excited about this, to see it begin next month. With that, I want to close my remarks here this evening by just sharing my deep appreciation for our entire staff. The closure and this pandemic has been nothing any of us have experienced in our K-12 career, and yet our team has stepped up to the challenge. From our incredible food services and operations teams, who have been out at our schools each day to ensure students do not go hungry during this closure, to our teachers who are creating lessons, calling students, uploading materials, and monitoring online classrooms, all while home with their families. Staff have answered this call to action. I want to thank, I want to thank our curriculum and technology teams, who are hard at work brainstorming and working through solutions for what next year may look like. At this point, we don't know what the governor will do in regards to schools, but our teams here are making sure that we'll be prepared, no matter what that decision is. And of course, I want to thank our budget and finance teams, who have been making sure our ship stays afloat during this time and have not allowed any PO invoice or paycheck to go without being processed. This has been a tremendous team effort, and each team member has played their roles wonderfully. So while while we're closed, there's much to be proud of with this division. Chairman Parent, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. All right, our next board meeting will be June the 11th. And I want to thank Dean for your, for getting this, our meetings together with Zoom. And I think it's worked very well. And I will see all of you on
Can I ask a question?
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Can I ask a question before we do that?
Yes, sir.
Me too, Chairman Parent. Go ahead, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Ladies first.
So, Dr. Bracy, I just want to commend you on your, can you hear me, your weekly report, especially regarding the PEBT. I had some parents say that, you know, they're ahead of the game because you sent that out in your weekly reports. So I just want to say the parents was giving you kudos on that. So thank you for your weekly report.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to know Reports are good.
I just want to know, for for summer school, who is eligible for summer school?
We are basing it on the the students who are furthest behind, but summer school is open to anyone. And so if there are parents who want their children to attend, they can reach out to their school. I know Ms. Nalasco is sending out information, the schools are going to be sending out information as well. But we are not turning anyone down for summer school. We want, you know, of course, those children who have demonstrated the the largest gaps in learning since March 13th to definitely be involved. But summer school is an opportunity for everyone to stay engaged with their learning. So there is no, we're not turning anyone away.
Thank you.
And Chairman Parent, this is Board Member Atkinson, one more question.
Yes.
Dr. Bracy, how are we looking on our pre-K registrations?
Dr. Nguyen probably has more of an on it.
We haven't launched it yet. I believe it's being launched this week. We, of course, this year had to take a different approach. Everything is being done online. I know that Mrs. Hill's reported to me yesterday, the applications are beginning to be taken this week. We anticipate that we will probably be able to fill all slots. And she and her team are creating multiple avenues for individuals to submit their applications. They are creating packets, and they can deliver those packets. So we should have more information on that by the next board meeting. Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen? Dr. Nguyen?
Yes.
I just want to clarify something. And the juniors that are going to become seniors, and the seniors that are graduating, are they going, are they going to be getting a, are they going to be taking exams? Are we, are, how is, how are their grades going to be determined? Because I know in other school divisions, they're doing it differently. And I'm not clear of how Portsmouth is doing. It's for for juniors to to become a senior. Do they take exams? And when the seniors are graduating, how are we making sure that they're, they passed all the requirements and ready to graduate? I guess maybe Dr. Kamarti or or Dr. Nguyen?
I'm going to put that one
Could you clarify that for me?
Yeah.
How are we validating to make sure? Go ahead.
So we're going to close out seniors on on June the 5th. That'll be the last day that they are actually required to do anything in terms of getting assignments in. That'll give the the guidance counseling or school counseling staff at each of the high schools an opportunity to audit and certify that those students are ready to advance toward graduation. You asked the question about, you asked the question about exams. We are not giving exams. We have a grading formula that does not include exams. We're going to count the third nine weeks mark, the third marking period grade, which was what they had when they left on the 13th. And that will be 50%, and it will go along with what they've accomplished since they've left us. And that will comprise the second semester grade.
So if they have not completed any assignments, and they're on the line of graduating, that may determine that they may not graduate. Is that correct?
No, sir. No, sir. Every student, every senior that we have who was in contention to graduate is going to commence. We're not going to have any students who don't graduate.
Okay, all right. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Parent, before you, before, before that motion comes in, Ms. Duren has those, Ms. Duren has those numbers that you that you were asking for?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Sir.
Ms. Duren?
Yes, there are 21 retirements that we have received for the end of the school year. And there were 41, actually, that we received all fiscal year.
Got it. Thank you.
Certainly.
All right, any other, any other questions you, just Dr. Kamarti?
I I do want to clarify, Mr. Chairman, because I know that we are being broadcasted. I want to clarify, if any senior who was enrolled in the classes that he needs or she needs to graduate will be in content, will commence. Now, if you're a senior who failed government first semester, and you weren't enrolled in government second semester, you'll have to complete that obligation at summer school, and you'll commence at the end of that. But for all seniors who were enrolled in the courses that they needed at the time that we left, those kids are going to be okay.
So they will have that option at summer school to to graduate?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
All right, now, any other questions any other board members want to bring up? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Lamb, and the second? All those in favor? There's a second, and all, Madam Clerk? We can sign out on our on our on, hey, guys, thank you so much for, and Kathy, thank you for setting all this up. You and Dean, y'all have been troopers. Mr. Falk, I mean, thank you so much. Thank y'all, and y'all have a nice evening, and see y'all June 11th.
Okay.
Take care.
June 11th, see y'all.